Yeah, the meeting last night. Oh, my God, great.
How's that going?
It's it's okay. The biggest problem is they didn't uh they wanted to change the soil limit.
Right.
And that was something they set up.
So we're ready to start a reunion.
Yes.
No. It's about what it is. Okay, I'm about to call the Richmond Township Planning Commission to work. At this time, I hope you reviewed the minutes that lay in front of you and I'll entertain a motion to approve them. Or if you have any questions, let's hang some of the questions.
How much that motion?
Matt moves it?
I'll second that motion.
Sam seconds, is there any discussion or question? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carried, minutes are approved. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give any remarks on things that are not on the agenda? Guess not. Old business sheets refill, we're asking, they're asking for an extension. How how long of an extension can we give them? We can give them more than sixty days, can't we?
I think the last one was ninety days, if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, I mean, my feeling is, are they ready to come back?
They they uh every time I call them, when we get to that point and ask them, their intention is to. And as they keep saying, it's some traffic, but I think it's just a dragging of the feet on the clients end trying to.
I'm just wondering if we shouldn't give them more than, you know, sixty days.
I mean, they did.
The one that they submitted was only for sixty days.
I think so when this came in, this was just before the board meeting, I think the board acknowledged this, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
So, yeah, they've already acknowledged this one, because the planning commission had met. And we, yeah, they they acknowledged it for this, so. If it gets closer and we need another one, I'll ask them what's appropriate.
You know, we we meet every month, so. All right, I'll entertain a motion to give them the extension until February twenty eighth, I think it was, yeah.
Yes.
Anybody want to move it?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension.
Sam moves, Ben, you want to second it, okay? All in favor, give a voice out, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, we're going down to number five. Planning Commission meeting dates for nine, uh twenty twenty four. Everybody look them over. Everybody knows that they're doing those particular days? I'm sure that your office was checked out, so any comments? If no, I'll entertain a motion to set the meeting dates. Ben made the motion, okay, do you have a second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, we're going to cubes. Cubes of Alton, LDP.
That's me. My name is Brian. Let's kind of introduce the project real quick. There's just a couple items from the review that we should talk about just to get through direction. Okay. These are back there. Same thing you guys have, I just kind of have a little color there. I'll um let me just get, give you guys something. This is part of an original subdivision that goes back to nineteen eighty nine. It was called Ober subdivision back then. And I brought a sheet to hand out to you guys. It kind of just kind of gives a outline of that, to pass you the history of things. There you go. Might pass this around to everybody. And um so I, not not all the lots were developed right away, obviously. The history of of this one here, I'm assuming you all know where this is at, by the corner with six sixty two here and two twenty two.
Right behind Speedway.
Yeah. It's the last one to be developed, I guess. I guess the Dunkin' Donuts and the Dollar General were part of the original subdivision plan. But they themselves as far as how to come in with their own land development approvals, but actually the vision of the land goes back to this nineteen eighty nine plan, you can see it on there. I think you can see it on there.
Next. Every reverberant.
These bottom lots here are are the different ones, kind of, just outside there. So um that's just basically the history. This this last, kind of last one to be developed, it was owned by Mr. Shirk, who was an ex, or no? I forget how, there's a little bit of history to it. There wasn't an approved plan way back whenever, but it was never built, it was never constructed. So through the years, I guess it was more or less for sure executed and maybe using some topsoil, stockpiling. Basically, I could tell from looking at the history of the aerial photography through the years. There's different times where piles of dirt there, must have been the excavators just kind of stolen stuff there until whenever. So the basin's been there since about eighty nine and uh the review comments, I guess just jump into those. I I circled the ones that I had felt we needed to happen.
That's fine, yeah. Typically, if you want to run with it, you you go those if there's anything that's worth circling.
Yeah, great.
Just talk about what you do there.
Yeah, that's great. So I'll just jump, jump ahead here. Item six, when under uh the zoning ordinance stuff. So there was a zoning hearing board um for this site and it had approval with certain conditions and why not to it. Or part of the approval, the zoning was to have to pave the lot. Have lighting, I think, may may might have been one of the conditions. But that anyway, that that kind of came up during the zoning aspect, so um I guess Scott here just kind of re-drew it, reiterated things that were in the zoning ordinance and stuff like that, as reminders for the most part. But number six, it says the planning commission should determine if parking was required. I guess we'll just, and we don't need all these answers tonight either. I mean, there's just external things, you know, usually just expected, introduce the project in the kind of next month, maybe get into more detail or whatever. But um the the ordinance itself doesn't have anything for cube, like many storage units or cubes. You know, it has things like maybe it's a commercial site or an offices, it'll it'll have a breakdown for parking spaces. And with the cube, these cube uh storage units, you kind of have parking around everywhere. You don't have like a a general, like everybody's coming at once, like you might have a store or something like that, hardware store, people coming and going. They kind of just are free to come. But primarily what's going to happen, which is that these units are 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 portable. So he can send these units to somewhere where a company or a homeowner or something that load them up and then bring them here and store them here. So they're not fixed structures, like a lot of times, you know, storage units have concrete pads and walls and everything. These are just going to be able to, you know, be hauled, you know, to different places, but.
Is is it a secure site that it's, I I guess I was under the impression it was a secure perimeter fence that his trucks are coming in and out?
I think that's part, it's going to be secure, yes. I didn't have that on the plan with that, that I will add that for my next month's Phoenix and get that back as part of your review. But yeah, it's going to be secure and and what, it's just going to be for private use more or less, you know, for how, you know, how sort of, how sort of units work. It's not for the general public to just kind of go. So I guess my personal take is, you know, there's plenty of area on here. I could I could show parking, but it's people are going to do what they want to do anyway. They're just going to drive over to their unit and kind of do their thing. We're not going to like park somewhere and then walk. They're just going to take the pickup truck and load up.
If somebody moves a cube, I mean, there's certain people that can do that?
Only the owner, his business is going to be the person that moves.
In other words, when you bring it back, it has a set place, period. And you're not going to be able to stick it somewhere else or stick it halfway out and that.
He'd have to comply with this, the the plan.
I mean, I don't know, I I.
Sam, I got, yeah, I kind of had a mixed, I I I I thought it was a, and I don't know if this goes back to when the original zoning hearing application was submitted. I was um sitting with Glenn Craft, the zoning officer, and when we spoke to I thought it was the owner, he had said it was going to be a secure property so that he can come in and pick up the uh storage units, drop them off when they need to be dropped off and stored securely. And that he was the only one going to be accessing those.
Primarily, that's what's going to, um that that's true. However, from what I understand, he wanted to leave open the possibility that somebody can still come and access their unit.
So I I think if it gets into the point where people are accessing this and the public can get in and out of there, I think then we might need to be looking at slightly different, not requirements, but just needed a little more information that if the general public is a little bit coming into there, even if they have a code, I think there needs to be.
Security.
I would say that, like the general public, in my mind, some way that just goes to Walmart and shows up. It's it's more private, it's like, yes, it's it's not open, like you you and me can't go there if we don't have a unit there. It is selective, it's more like, you know, just some some of the terminology.
But I I think if it's, if it is somebody can come in and access that and get in through the gate, then I think we do have to look at parking. Because then there's somebody who can come in and there has to be.
That's fine, we can talk about, but there there's no specific requirements and any ordinances for for many storage units, so. And my my experience is those people just drive to their unit, they don't want to park somewhere. I mean, there's plenty of space, like I can just show parking here or whatever, but they're not going to use it. They're just going to drive over to their unit anyway. It's not like there's, there's not going to be a lot of traffic, like a lot of times like the commercial site, you're seeing all this traffic coming and going.
Understood, but if if people are coming in and going through this property and can drive their vehicles, then even though there's twenty four foot drive aisles, they're going to be expected to have to back out of there.
Well, you know, my 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 first opinion is it's fine. If you guys have something in the ordinance, then, you know, we'll obviously comply with it.
Yeah, I think we have to look, I I I guess we have to look at the the zoning hearing board decision a little more about what the intended use was. I, where I was going with this, if it was secure and no one was able to access that other than employees, I think the layout of the site can be a little bit different than if the public can access that and walk through it. Safety reasons, accessibility reasons, if that comes into play, parking, um I think it's it's, I mean, that's my opinion. I think the solicitor, if you didn't hear.
Well, in the end, like I said, it has to be, it should be in the ordinance, and I don't see anything in there talking about.
Oh, I agree. I mean, it was granted by conditional use, and that's why I hope some of that was unconditional use.
So they have parking, storage units, something, rather than there's one on the other side of the car dealer.
And I'm not sure if that was, if that was a use in a zoning district, it may have those listed parking requirements for when they go in there, because it's just assumed people are going to get to their units.
We can kick it back to to the zoning, because there's a zoning requirement, doesn't have to, this board doesn't have jurisdiction of the zoning ordinance, so you'd have to go back to the zoning hearing board or something like that for certification.
Yeah, I know, if you guys already got it, though, I'd hate to see you have to go back for it.
Well, right now, there's, we wouldn't be requesting anything. There's no, there's no variance, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says that you have to have parking for many stores or something like this. It's just not in there. And you, you know, you can't cherry pick and just, well, this.
Oh, I agree, but I I'm.
You can recommend it.
I didn't thoroughly look through the parking, not knowing exactly who was accessing this or tensions were or if it was just employees or others, and if it was others.
I'll just send a request that is based on the ordinance, not just opinion, you know, if it's in the ordinance, we have to.
Sure, sure, I agree with you, but I I think we ought to look at it a little closer, just because if people are coming in and out there.
But what would be the requirement?
Not sure, I just don't want to miss anything.
I'm just saying, from a common sense standpoint, you have twenty four foot aisle, if people are going to pull up, and not that many, for the most part, it's going to be the owner just delivering, just wants to allow people to have that as an option. So there's not going to be that many people using it, when they come, they're just going to pull up, they're going to get their stuff or not get their stuff, and they're going to leave. You you're not having like all this constant traffic coming and going, flowing through this site.
Agreed, but.
You have like one or two people hitting it at a time, you know.
And even so, let's say there's two, and they have a unit next to each other, the ordinance does allow for a layout of any site, regardless many units or whatever it is, so that it's safe, accessible, and that's that's part of what we're going for here. So I mean, it's, I feel like it's within the ordinance.
I think it's safe and accessible, and I'm just asking, if it's in the ordinance, show me, let's just move on, you know.
I I think we just got to make sure. I I try to make it vague so we can talk about it and have a discussion point, because my impression.
I I've done storage units in the past, myself designed them, and I never provide a parking for them. I mean, they they are basically twenty four foot aisles, never, never.
We have two, but we have required them, so I I'm not saying.
I'm just saying, and in my own experience, I've not seen any personal issues, I've done it over thirty years now. I'm just saying, like, if you have an ordinance requirement, let me know what it is, and I'll comply with it. If you don't have an ordinance requirement, then respectfully ask. Not be made clear.
Understood.
And what difference might be not having an office? Like, the office space may be on.
I I thought it was secure, where there wasn't anybody coming in and out other than employee. Into that aspect, I think there's a lot different view on width of the aisles, need for parking. Um I think lighting, you can even get into there, because there's ordinance requirements specific to employees and public and that kind of thing. So in general, I think some of these comments were intentionally vague because the plan was vague in detail. So I I made what comments I could to find out where.
I I think it's fine to recommendation, but again, this is under the zoning ordinance, so the zoning hearing board has jurisdiction of the zoning ordinance, not the planning commission, which only has jurisdiction of subdivision.
Well, understood.
So let's say, it's just if, I I'm a believer in the process. If we've not in compliance with the zoning ordinance, then we will have to be compliant with it, but we are in compliance with the subdivision. Which is all we here need to worry about. We can address it later and figure out how to go back to zoning if we need to, or whatever required there. Or, you know, reread the conditions, and if the conditions are stipulated such a manner that it isn't open to the general public, then because of the point, the owner's not going to have a problem with that. He just wanted to have flexibility, he wasn't planning on on using it that way, or allowing it. He just wondered, just from his own business perspective, if that would benefit to have this huge possibility.
Understand, I I put it in there to discuss with the planning commission, because this is the first point of review with the township. Not having enough detail on here. Like you said, site lighting is required, but not shown on this plan, so just using it as a chance to talk to everybody here in the planning commission to get a better idea and feel for what we're actually looking at, so.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I guess just they want to think about it.
Yeah, I I think it's a matter of just looking at the zoning hearing board, just seeing a little.
If you have parking, you definitely have to take take into consideration that this isn't your normal commercial business, or office, or retail, or anything like that.
Oh, I agree.
Kind of look at as, you know, you have terrific people access the whole thing at a time at the most, you know. But you just don't have that much. It's not open to just people, anybody going in and out. Yeah, so all the comments, I could say, are pretty straightforward. I just want to jump to number ten, next on page three. Number ten says that the site does not propose to dispose of the use, should be discussed in terms of whether it's required. There's not going to be any.
Oh, so you're on uh page three, I'm sorry.
There's not going to be any bathrooms, there's no, there's no actual structures being proposed in under storage units that are portable. There's no office or permanent, you know, facility there, so.
To to me, it, that's, again, that's kind of what I assume, there wasn't any need for somebody that's going to be there for an extended period of time. There's no office. I don't see that there's a need for water or sewer on this lot.
There's no structure, actually, of the water, is there?
No. For for what it's worth, it's really a paved lot.
That's right.
With a fence or whatever else around it, and these are all mobile, so they're my interpretation is there's really no need for sewer water connection here. I think that should be a note added to the plan, just stipulating what the use is and why that's not proposed, and probably just clarify what the.
Yeah, if there's no on-site staffing and the company is intended to be there for more than a couple of minutes to pick up and deliver and see why there needs to be sanitary sewage facilities there.
For the same in the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number seven says lighting going to be shown at some point, or is it a one of these here?
I'll add it to the to the revision, to the right.
It wasn't shown on the plan.
What, it's not, you're not finished, are you?
I'm not finished with the plans. Like I said, most of the comments are are very straightforward like that. Set back line, you know, different things like that. The next one, number eleven on page three, says it doesn't propose water, that kind of goes in with the sewer, like there's not facilities.
These pods are reused, correct?
I'm not an expert on the, yes.
Well, I I mean, I'm assuming that the pods are used, or they're rented, they're used, and then they're reused. And I'm wondering if there's ever a cleaning process where, you know, they're scrubbed in between rental agreements with regard to a specific product. I don't know if you have any knowledge of that, but that would be something I'm just curious about. If they are cleaned, where does that happen?
Well, I mean, if it happened on site, what what would be the issue with that?
You need water, I mean, if you're going to scrub them.
Oh, right, well, then obviously they won't be doing that.
So that might be, I mean, again, I think some notes to manage the expectations for the benefit of, you know, I don't want there to be a conflict down the road somewhere where, you know, the property owner thinks that something is part of the use and the township believes that it's not part of the use. And that, you know, water is part of that, and the ability to clean the units on site and, you know, have water and dispose of wastewater. I mean, if that's something that would become part of the use, we'd have to incorporate that into the planning.
Absolutely.
Could we maybe maybe cut that into the same note about the water, not, no, public water or water supply intended for the property, and just kind of maybe add on to that some kind of uh maintenance or cleaning, or the use of water is also prohibited or something along those lines.
Yeah, that. And there there's no electricity, I mean, is that?
Well.
Is there going to be electricity?
Well, there have to be for the lights, I guess.
Yeah, there will have to be electricity. So you could run a vacuum cleaner, but then you'd have to dispose of the waste. And anyway, I mean, it seems trivial, but I I also, I just kind of think it needs to be thought through and appropriate notes be on the plan to make sure the expectations are clear.
I guess that that's probably something you can run past the client, see what his thoughts are.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
See if there's anything appropriate.
Because if he wants, like I said, if he wants to clean the units on site, I don't have an objection to that. But I think we need to think it through and make sure that the facilities are there to make it possible. But also, that goes to, you know, if somebody is going to do cleaning there, that involves staffing. That means people are spending potentially hours at the site. And then you start thinking about sanitary sewage, you know, so these things can sort of mushroom, but they're all related. And I just want to make sure that there's no, again, misunderstanding.
I would say, Chris, I think more often than not, when the applicant gets involved and can better specify what's anticipated or will occur, they're more than willing usually to say, yeah, we we can put this note on or that note, because it's not going to hinder their business at all. And as long as it doesn't hinder what they're planning on doing, they usually agree to the notes pretty well.
Yeah.
Knowing it doesn't hurt true, hurt them or the township, but.
I'll check in, I work pretty closely with the owner there, I'll check in with him.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's it's really about managing expectations, so that things aren't recurring there that we weren't expecting and that maybe there's something that shouldn't be incorporated into the plan that's not there.
Yeah, very well. I guess I'm hearing everything, but not sure where everything's fitting, so.
Oh, we'll just, we'll we'll work it out, you know.
Yeah, let's say we have a problem.
We can always say that you you need a revised land development plan if you ever add anything, like, so that you can't just build a structure, even a wash bay or anything like that, that you can't do, come back through the process.
But let's say we have a problem there one night, or one day, or whatever. Is there always going to be a contact person to call? I mean, problems develop all over the place, you never know when they're going to pop up. And and let's say we have something happen there, you know, is there going to be a contact person?
I mean, I guess if if you want one.
I don't know.
I guess you have, you do you give contact information for every property that?
That's just being a good neighbor, I guess, the rest of the.
No, no, I I think it's me, like, like if you go to a car wash, car wash shuts down, the water's not working or anything. There's an actual sign on the car wash stating if there's problems or anything, you need to call this number, so they can come out and service it, or you lost your money or something.
Well, that's raises an important question. Are the people that rent these units going to be coming to the property, I guess?
Yeah, that's been, was part of the part of the discussion before before you arrived, is that it's a bit of an open question. I I the the owner isn't actually planning that, from what I under, from what I understand. He is expecting to just have these units and be doing this himself and just using this area as a storage area for the units that he's personally kind of getting. And whether it's a homeowner or or whatever, he's from what I understand is that he wanted to be open the possibility that a private person can come and enter the property to access their 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 unit. He didn't want to like give that up as a as a possibility, but it isn't what he's actually planning, does that, does that make sense? And I think that, I I didn't have any involvement in the zoning aspect of the project at all. But the owner of my company today told me that that fact, and that that had been squared away with the zoning, that he could do that as part of their um, was, their, I I don't know, maybe, you know how they have the bold points, they're fact, it is in there somewhere, according to mine.
Well, you're right, it is mentioned, but I'm not sure how included it was.
And some of the, oh, go ahead.
Well, I guess if if it is in the zoning decision, that that is a move, it just, that's the way it is, the decision is dictating everything else, you know, that it can only be him accessing.
I was concerned, Chris, with the, if the, the general public, and not necessarily just in and out freely, obviously, they'd have some type of access card, when, if they could get into the property, does that open issues with accessibility on the property, parking? Brian made the point that if you're going to require parking, it needs to be part of your zoning for that use. This was a use by conditional, this use was conditional use by the zoning hearing board. They didn't mention parking as part of that, I don't know how you interpret the number needed.
Okay, there there's a finding of fact in the decision, says a portion of the portable storage unit industry permits customers to come onto the storage business property to personally access and store items in the units. If this option is pursued by applicant at the property, Mr. Martin's agreed that applicant would develop increased security measures such as gates on the entrances with security access codes. My preference would be to say that he has to come back to the township to discuss how to manage customer access, if he's going to do that. I mean, so I guess I need clarification. Is he thinking this is something he might do as soon as it opens and he hasn't decided yet? Or is this something he's thinking, maybe in a couple of years, I might consider it? And I don't know if you have a feel for what his thought process is on that.
I I don't, honestly. I'm not sure what, like, as far as, like, to keep, like, I could have, they could come in next lesson, maybe, to make me answer more directly.
Right, because I think what Scott is saying makes sense, that, you know, if it is, if it becomes more of, I would say, a retail type access, then I think you get into things like accessibility as a as a potential issue.
Can I, can I just jump up and on a little bit, please? The way I understand it, you know, these aren't, first of all, this, I just think it's important to keep in mind that they're they're cubes, they're kind of like their their own thing. It's not like a normal office or retail center or a Lowe's or a smaller Dunkin' Donuts shop or whatever. It it's it's a private kind of thing that isn't open, going to ever be open to the general public to just come and go. And there aren't a structure, I I think a lot of the ADA stuff, like if you're looking at parking, you can have parking spaces, but it's usually from a parking space that's ADA access to the building, but there's no buildings to access. You know, these aren't structures. So normally, if you have a building, you have the. You know, these aren't structures, so normally if you have a building, you have depressed curb or whatever, you have flat spaces and they get in, they have the door to get in, but they're not structured, so the, the, the IBC, the building code stuff doesn't apply to it. And if even if it provided the ADA spaces, which is easily done on the site, I mean, it's quite rare, what would it be for? What would it then?
I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Like, you know, get, you know, where to go.
Yeah, I don't wanna overkill it either, I know.
It's kind of hitting at, but at the same time, I don't wanna.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that.
And, and of course, accessible is also a federal thing, so you always have to be in compliance with the accessibility act. No matter what, even regardless of the plan, you still always have to be in compliance with it.
I, and, and it might have been a misinterpretation on my end. I had said, I think it was the owner that I spoke to with Glenn on the phone before the application was submitted for the zoning. I thought it was secure strictly for the business itself. So to me, that kind of got rid of many of those other thoughts of people accessing and different aspects and like zoning ordinance or subdivision that speaks to general public or.
Well, he, he wants security, so maybe we're missing each other in the, the finding of fact there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of looking at it a different angle, but he, he also wants security for his own units because they're storage units. He doesn't want people just to be able to go there and break them open and steal things.
Is there any fencing that's depicted on the plan?
I didn't have, I, I forgot to put on the phone.
Okay, but your, your understanding is fencing and gated?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I don't think that I'm ready to say that accessibility is not an issue entirely, but I understand your point, I mean, what, what would that even look like? But I guess if people can come there to get into their unit, they have to park somewhere. Do they just pull in front of their unit and that's their parking space? Maybe it is.
That is how people use the storage, it's just everywhere, you know, they just always just go to their unit. So I did, I used to have one, I just drove there and opened it, stole it, got the stuff, whatever, took off.
Yes, I, I, I think to your point, without a building on the site, that's, that's usually, if you have parking, that's where it's located. So it may just be a unique enough animal that it does kind of slip through some of that requirement.
We can choose some areas where special, like I can make sure where the unit's gonna be, like they're accessible areas for, specific for those units on, on the site somewhere. And make sure it's graded, you know, two percent everywhere, just make those units, like five units or whatever, maybe treat it like a, if you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the site challenges you on that one.
No, no, just, just add it and pave that small area there and then they can get into those units or whatever.
Is everything else stone, is that?
The site, I mean, it looks grass, but Brian in previous discussions, he had, he had looked at Google Images and I think over the years since they've done some hauling of spoils, piles or whatever they're doing there, the thought was at some point there was stone that got spread in different areas, but.
Yeah, there, there was, and it just kind of grew through, through the years, it's kind of gone now.
But what's the finished surface?
Uh, it's.
For the decision, it's paved, it's in there that it's a paved lot. And, um, and I guess, yeah, the site's kind of already graded, you asked about grating contours, it's kind of already, there's only a little bit in the corner. It's ready to just have something put on it, somewhere along on, somebody worked it.
What I believe I read on the decision for zoning was just pot, so there's not gonna be boats or RVs or stuff like that?
No, and I guess the decision prohibits that, so.
Did it?
I can add some of the decision notes, I could even add the land development plans, I can add all those.
Just no more for storage, so that would be.
I could add all those notes to the cover sheet. So it gets recorded.
I mean, really, the whole site looks to be grass, maybe there's pockets of like what seems.
Yeah, there might be some, I saw, I saw some cars tonight parked in there on some stone that was kind of left over from something.
Yeah, I think two people parked, I did it from the business across the street.
Yeah.
Right now.
Okay, well, I didn't recall that it prohibited boats and RVs, but it, it cross references the specific requirements of section eight oh four ten for storage businesses. And there's a requirement for screening, if you have.
That kind of goes along with the fence is to do the screening, screenings for outdoor storage. I think the units themselves are considered outdoor storage.
Okay, so you're.
So that would kind of be.
You're, you're intending to be screened?
Yeah.
Fence and screen, okay.
Yeah, that was part of the, the ask tonight, and if he's saying yes, then, you know, we're good there, it's, they'll comply.
Okay, alright, that sounds good.
That was part of what we're gonna do.
I apologize, I had.
No, no, you, you mostly missed just that discussion of the access and who's coming in and out.
With the holiday, I'm doing double duty tonight, too many meetings.
The, the next comment I, I asked, requested on the cover this evening is page four, number fourteen. And, um, there, in the ordinance, there's all these criteria, i- 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 first of all, it allows the planning commission to, to require any of these studies if, if they so desire, but before it, it says, yeah, you can do whatever you want to, basically. It does have stipulations of when a traffic study, for instance, would be required and stuff like that. So, um, I thought what I might do, and then there's some other studies, did you, did you mention them and?
Yeah, I kind of listed them there and just called it all under eight seventeen section.
Some of them, like historical impact, I'm sure you're not gonna request or, I guess I should preface that, we don't, we don't meet the, the initial threshold of, to have to do these things, but you are allowed to. That's your understanding as well, I guess, allowed to require them, on a case by case basis.
The one thing I saw was maybe it was like twenty thousand square feet of impervious surface and it looked like it was more than that. I think it kind of hit that bullet point, but I think it was more of a general discussion of, and it might have just been for traffic, but it did hit that bullet point. I figured it'd just be a good idea to kind of look at each one of these, talk about them and see if we truly believe, I think recreation, there's not really any need, in my opinion, that you look at the recreation, so I think it's an easy one to say, just doesn't really hit that, given the use. I think traffic, in some cases, you think the trucks might be coming in and out of here, but farmers was, in my opinion, designed as a side road there for the trucks in and out of the speedway. Unless this was a high generating truck traffic location, but I don't know what they're looking at for numbers of trucks.
Yeah, just to clarify, I have it here too, this glip across floor area, so I think it's more or less saying, hey, you gotta big building.
Well, there was the floor.
Yeah, so it kind of clarified that.
What kind of a hauling floor truck is there for these units?
You know, I, I, I'm learning too, so I've never seen this before, I think it's a great idea, but I've never come across this specific thing.
You know, you're, you're right.
There are lifts.
Boy, I think the, I think the rollback, now that we're talking about it, was part of the exhibit for the zoning hearing board. Because they showed one of these sitting just kind of in somebody's yard. And it almost looked like a roll up type front garage door on it. And then it showed a flathead truck angled downright, I think they, they hit it with the chains and pulled it up. I think that's what I saw from what. Did you see that too, or you?
I didn't see it myself.
He's gonna say, I think I saw that picture.
So I, I guess what I was getting at is, is somebody's not gonna come in with a trailer that has three of these, you know, levels, plus one trailer, it's not, not gonna be that kind of access, it's gonna be one at a time, coming and going.
Oh, right, as far as we know, yes. I'll expect to have them come next month and kind of get the.
Yeah, based on what you see happen at the site now, it looks like you're gonna have trucks waiting to deal at Speedway that try and back in there or something.
Right, we're gonna, I'm gonna re. After kind of looking, I wasn't necessarily gonna, hang on, just jump to that, the driveways. I'm gonna talk to the owner about kind of one driveway, I'm gonna check your, the site distance and things like that. See its proximity with the other driveways and give a little more clarification on traffic flowing into the site and out of the site and making sure that it is safe and that it meets. The owner had originally wanted to, uh, driveway speed doesn't need two driveways, I can get two hundred for the separation, that's more technical stuff on them on the site, but perhaps, you know, just total one driveway, I don't know, maybe the owner requires one driveway, I don't know.
So it, it, it says trying to minimize where you can to
Right.
have the least amount so that there's the least amount of possible impacts in there.
And I can even, you know.
Or use semi bikes, I don't think you're gonna inflict with people coming in and out of different driveways, but the, the bigger one was where do they land with the opposite driveways? Because it recommends being either across from driveways or separated by a hundred fifty feet. So that, that was kind of the, that, that was the intent of the other comments, I think it was a salvo for those. I mean, that's.
Yeah, so I guess.
Kind of five on page three.
Okay, you asked about fourteen, I see the major problem, that was somebody, you know, telling it differently, the traffic impact, utility impact, recreational impact, physical impact, historical, environmental, hydrological. Anybody have any comments on the planning commission?
I mean, as long as we're not concerned about the impervious service in the runoff, right?
No, I mean, that's, they're gonna be getting that NPDS permit on it?
Yeah, it's just submitted.
And usually that kind of covers the, the concerns of the environmental, hydrologicals, if they happen to be pulling a lot of water off the property and.
It's really, it's a slow work project, and that's where I think it's the issue.
I think, and, and it didn't, I apologize in the letter, it didn't come out and say it. The site shall be reviewed by the appropriate fire and emergency services layout and access.
Right, I was kind of hoping that the township could maybe forward that to, to see that.
Usually we're looking at whatever, the largest truck that you're gonna service the property with can turn onto.
And they like to be able to get access to the site too, like, do they have like another little code that they can punch in to get in there or?
Yeah, they'll, they'll ask for that too.
Key or something else, stop spots, which kind of addresses some of the concern about with the contact, but the fire company has the ability to access the site, that kind of takes care of that too.
Well, if there's, if there's a break in, takes place department, just go, we have more than enough spots to follow up, so.
Oh, right, sure, yeah, good point. Yeah, you'd almost expect there's gonna be a break in at some point tonight.
Absolutely.
It's just kind of, it's probably a given.
Think half of the police report for the township is over at the Sheetz Inn.
So.
Yeah, the bad news for the Sheets was just coming across the street by the crowbar.
I thought that, just, just on the, the, these, just to be clear, sort of clear on item fourteen.
Sure, sure, yeah.
There's no reason for hydro geological impact, agreed?
I, I don't think we're looking for any of these studies, necessarily.
Environmental, historical, fiscal, it's just, you know, recreational, doesn't have any impact on the recreational aspects of the township.
Typically.
Like, if it's a subdivision, that's when you kind of make me want, if you want maybe this big subdivision to have a park or something.
I think out of all these, on the traffic impact, we, I, I typically view that as, in lieu of the traffic impact show that the trucks accessing the site can safely access with the layout being provided.
Right, and, and I could just, for good measure, throw a tractor trailer on it, not that I'm anticipating a tractor trailer, but I'll just show that on this attorney's, just to show that, because we have to go, I saw like a comment, we have to go to thirty five feet wide of driveways too, certainly. Take care of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and if there's reason to say we're looking for consideration on that, I think that's the, the salvo requirement, so I think we can work with that, depending on what we come up with.
Well, you know, if, if the fire chief looking at it, I think it makes sense to make sure that they're satisfied with the access. I'm also wondering if we want a little more detail on the security system, you know? Again, thinking about the probability of break in, you know, I think the police department likes cameras, you know, they like to record information that can then provide information for investigation. And I don't know, you know, I mean, clearly a fence and controlled access is critical, but and lighting is critical, but I think also cameras would be really almost necessary. I don't know if you have any knowledge about what the owner's plans are with that?
No, I, I just, um, I don't, honestly, what I, I would think you'd want that, it's so easy to do these days too, you know, and, um, but that, maybe that could be part of the review from the emergency people, that they can add that to their, their letter, if, if they, you know, or at least, I'll talk, I'll certainly talk to the owner about it too, and, you know, I'll kind of.
Okay, where are we now, so I guess.
Well, do we, do we have a waiver request?
Uh, no, no, there's, I, I didn't want to mention a, a waiver request I may ask for in the future. It, it's a little tentative, I don't, I don't wanna get in stormwater, I'll work that out with the craft and, and kind of see what we need to do, and pull on that and get, get that squared away. But the one thing I do, do ask is that. Okay, you didn't get this little thing, they, this, this was.
I put one over there.
I'm sorry, this was the original subdivision, and you can see up here on the floor, and this was back nineteen, I pulled it off the Recorder Deeds website for the county. And the basin's here, the basin acids today was, was on this plant. And apparently, you know, if things were, weren't done the same way back in, in that timeframe as they are today, obviously. And, but I, I do believe that their intention was to, to utilize this basin for all of the, the locks, which includes the Dunkin' Donuts one and the Dollar General one. For instance, I'm just asking that, apparently, it, it's a little technical, but, but they were still relying on, on the, the original basin to manage their water to a large degree, they have some stuff on their site to kind of handle water quality, but not the overall thing, I think we're kind of in agreement with that. More or less conceptually. And that, I would just ask that, since that's the case, as part of this original subdivision, any waiver that may have been granted for them in regard to stormwater, we could also have the same waivers granted to us, and that doesn't mean there's necessarily a problem, it's just more or less, since that timeframe, you know, it's still managing water, it's still worked, but we have to, these days, cut it even more, after it was originally approved. But they, I don't think they did that, because if they would have had to do that, they would have been dealing with the basin and modifying it then, and they, and those were recent projects like twenty eighteen, twenty sixteen, maybe, they, they both went in. I'm just asking, could, conceptually, as a part of the original subdivision, that's how they were treated, so we get treated the same.
To, to, try to help me a little with this review, I had Gary look at the, um, the stormwater. He looked at that, his opinion was that the pond was put in for the pre versus post development, that's how they came up with the design, but since then, we've got the water quality and other stream bank requirements, which is basically, in this situation, as he said, they, there's usually some more onsite improvements to kind of offset that additional stormwater that needs to be handled.
And just, you know, we would still do that, like, we would do that minimal.
Okay.
Yeah, we will.
But if there was any consideration for any waivers associated with stormwater that we would consider that as well? I don't think that's too far reaching, I think we gotta look a little bit more on what may have been assumed, but I think we see where the design goes and if there's anything needed.
Yeah, and on that note, I was hoping the township would have the plans and a stormwater report for the Dunkin' Donuts, Dollar General that I could see, or we could come together and look at together. Because the county doesn't record stormwater reports, it would be really interesting for me at least to see what they actually did, how they looked at their projects, since it was part of this overall subdivision. And the county, I looked for plans for, for them and I could not find anything for each one, so I'd have to take a trip there, I guess.
I'm happy to look, Gary was a very good record keeper, so if there, if he did actually keep it, we might actually have it, but.
It would be interesting to see how, since they are also part of the puzzle, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I, doesn't hurt, more information is never, no, usually not a bad thing. That's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm assuming the township also has records, because they're, they're not that far back.
I've only been here since twenty twenty one, so I have no idea where they would be, be kept. It would probably be quicker for Scott to figure something out than wait months for me to go through everything and try.
Stop the shop under the fourth door.
Yeah, I would have more faith in Scott looking something up than.
We can, I actually, yeah, I, I, I can talk to Gary, but I can also get through his files pretty quickly to just see.
Chris, you have the various.
Report.
No, I mean, you're referring to that, okay, I, I never saw that, so I didn't, none of us, you know, seen that, so you're referring. You're referring to that, okay, I, I never saw that, so I didn't, none of us, you know, seen that, so you're referring.
Yeah, I.
Well, you're.
It's hard, it's hard to piece it back together, you know.
It would be.
Is that on the hearing board?
Yeah. Yeah, this is the decision.
I mean, I'm just saying, because you were reviewing it, we didn't see that, so.
Well, that was one of the first things I wanted to look at when I was preparing for tonight, is to see what the zoning hearing board said, because.
Right.
You know, they did have some conditions, they included in their decision some of the facts that were presented at the hearing, so. It's stuff the planning commission should be familiar with.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the only questions I personally have, but obviously you can answer more.
But part of what the zoning hearing board said was that to the extent that there was. Information that was not presented at the hearing, that they were not granting any relief from anything that wasn't specifically asked for. So what that means is they approved the use as a special exception, but they didn't grant any variances from any of the objective standards. Like if there's a lot coverage issue, if there's a paving issue, you know, if there's a setback issue. All those things have to be complied with, because there was no variance granted against any of the objective standards. The only thing the zoning hearing board did was to look at the application to say, is this use okay at this location? And they said, yes, it was, provided that a couple of conditions were.
Okay.
So, you know, for purposes of the plan review, you know, any of the objective dimensional regulations have to be complied with.
So what it looks like, we all got to look back and. Review things so we know exactly what's happening, including use guys.
Yeah, yeah, there's homework.
I mean, there's things that. I remember nineteen eighty nine, but that was a long time ago, so.
Well, I think it's probably a pretty good use, because, you know, it's residential on both ends of two twenty two that, uh, probably. You know, utilizing facility like this, so.
Well, I see the cube going today, they picked one up down Black, right in front of them, right, I mean, these things are somewhere between fifteen and twenty foot long, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I imagine.
Somebody emptied out their basement or something, put in a cube, and I guess that's where they put it, I don't know.
Yeah, there wasn't enough storage for anybody, that was one of the things that just got snatched up so quick and then there's no, no more.
I'm just a little concerned about who's responsible, because I had a situation just over here, not quite a year ago, where we. Had some people come out from Reading that were doing things in buildings next to the bridge hall. And on the school property and, and who was in charge, who do you call, you know? Uh, they were there after dark, they were people that weren't supposed to be there, they were in buildings that they shouldn't have been in. I don't know, I. I think there should be somebody that's responsible that you can call and work with, in that situation, they were working with the police, but.
Well, when, when there's nobody who's on site every day, you need to know who to call.
That's all I'm after.
Especially with the perimeter fence and screening and the surrounding uses, just having debris flying around, it can get probably pretty ugly looking if known.
And I know with the county dispatcher for, for fire DMS, like you could assign a contact person and phone number in their system. Just know that from the fireside, like most properties, they have two contact information for. So if fire or police, if somebody called nine one one, the, the county would have the appropriate contact information for that location, if it was provided. That's good to know.
Okay, yeah, I think on my end, um, there was one thing I wanted to bring up.
Does the company have any, uh, regulations, well, it probably would, about what kind of product would be stored in these units? They would know what's being put in?
Nothing flammable, nothing illegal, on the fireside, that would be one of the things, so I used to be the deputy chief of one of the township fire companies. That would be one of the things that I would ask is like.
There.
Has that to be two of those explosive, high flammable? And, and to be quite honest, the, the company owners aren't going to know what's in.
Correct. I don't know how to handle that, I guess.
Does, Chris, does, uh, just say, I don't know. If, if this is a special exception for the use in this district, but there's other storage. Uses permitted in other districts. Would some of those stipulations?
I think you're right, whatever the ordinance says are prohibited would be prohibited in these too.
That carries, that's, that's kind of.
A lot of times I see those things like in floodplains, you see a lot more stringent, like what you can play in a front.
Is there, is there need to just have notes similar to those put on the plan? If that's applicable?
Uh, if there is anything like that, absolutely.
Then, uh, I'll look into that one and just cross check with Chris.
Yeah, but if, if it has stipulations of what can be stored outdoors, we'll apply to this.
And it'd probably be, actually probably just easiest just to reference that section on the ordinance if that applies.
Yeah, and you would have to then.
To put it in his contract.
Yeah, or, yeah.
With his customers.
Yeah, he'd have to police that himself, I guess, somehow.
Yeah, I think so, I think so. No, I, I was just going to say, and I didn't think, I don't think I had anything else to add, I think we hit everything that I was going to bring up, but. In, in talking with the owner, I think it would just be good to have him clear up some of the stuff as far as the maintenance and cleaning of the facilities, this. What security, the, the emergency services are going to have some kind of knock box or something to access the locks, but. We'll let them kind of specify on that one. Yeah, hours operation was another one, just.
It would be fun, the trash could raise the gates with the truck that was built through, it would be kind of fun.
There's too many of those movies, I think.
Okay, what, no use being here all night, we, we gotta do a little homework with you guys and so forth and so on, you know, come back with a. Hopefully, a final, not a final report, but almost there.
It'll be much, much.
Yeah, and then we can go from there. All right?
Yeah, thank you all for joining.
Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, have a good one.
Hi, Sam, have you had a comprehensive planning meeting here?
No, I have not.
Well, apparently not.
Who do I contact?
Okay, Sam's on our committee and I guess he doesn't get contacted, but I was contacted by, uh, Fleetwood's person on the board. And they said that, and who is that, county or state that comes and works with us?
The joint comprehensive plan?
Yes.
We just, uh, at last Monday, or last Monday's Board of Supervisors meeting, we just approved going to the joint comprehensive plan. So I was going to ask tonight to you guys if somebody wanted to represent the township.
Well, Sam's supposed to be our representative.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if there's anything else, that, that's what I know right now, the only thing is they must have met already, because, uh. The, they say the county person is in charge of this, or is it somebody in state?
I'm not sure exactly how they're going to run this, how they run it in some other places, is that. The county assigns somebody to be like a facilitator.
Correct.
To help you through the process and they charged the municipality something for those services. So the county person would be basically a planner who acts as, uh, a consultant. To the members of the committee to help you come up with the revisions to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, I had a call from Russell Anderson, who's on the comprehensive plan thing, whatever they call them group.
Right.
Uh, anyway, this, he's Fleetwood's representative, and he said he got a little upset with the person in charge and the person pegging it up. Saying we have one big problem in our comprehensive plan area, which is mainly great for Fleetwood and Richmond. He says we have too many farms that are totally sold their development rights. He said, we gotta, we gotta stop that, I said to Russell, I said, there's no way we can stop that, and there's no way we can break the agreement. He said, well, their plan is to draw something up so they can do it, they're working with state legislator. Now, I know that they've tried this before, didn't crack the shit, cracked the egg, but. Uh, I just think that's a bad representation from the county or state, whoever's doing it.
That's very disturbing.
It was very disturbing to me. I mean, the problem is we've run out of space, you know, it, it's going to happen, you don't have place to put everything anymore.
Well, you gotta go up and you gotta use the brownfields, and there's a lot of ground that can be recycled. And I think people have to use land more efficiently, like these, these, uh, two acre lots. Are not an efficient land use, you know.
That's a hard comprehensive plan, yeah.
If people are begging for land for residential development. There's got to be denser and, you know, they have to use less land. Uh, I mean, I don't know, maybe some people can't buy a house unless they have two acre yards, but I think that, uh. People have to be more efficient with land use.
Well, I think somehow we have to get that point across to the county or whoever's helping us make these plans, I mean. It, it's something we've put in place to preserve that land and it's not to be broken and, uh.
That's very upsetting.
Russell told me they were very upset, and that's what he heard at the whole meeting.
Well. I don't know if you saw the paper, I was trying to help on the township. To get some land eligible for preservation and they have had very little preservation on the lawn, but they see how all their land is disappearing. So they wanted to try to get some land to preserve. And that land had been slated for housing development twenty years ago and it was never developed. So the county comprehensive plan shows it as future development. Now, the county commissioners adopted a rule many years ago that said, when I went line back out on the board. That said, if, if your.